I have gotten, you ready Gina?
Mm-hmm.
Gina?
Wes?
Uh, I thought everybody was gonna be here.
I'm guessing Gina's at the game, should probably come in right now.
Oh, that's right, they had a game at four thirty, didn't they?
Right.
Are we doing action on Friday?
Dave is not dressed tonight, Mr. Walker?
Uh.
Is Dave not, he's not dressed tonight?
Well, Saturday, tonight, maybe, Thursday, tomorrow, and hopefully, maybe.
No, it shouldn't be actual, but.
We're going to do, we're going to work from now, but it's gonna be set. If you guys would feel more comfortable, I'm going to just step out when Patricia goes through the, sort of, I find staying in and whatever, just, like, whatever makes.
I'll find her the way.
Dress up as it. Okay. Do you have any preferences, Patricia?
Um, I, I don't think you would need to, but that's up to you.
Okay.
I guess I want to just make sure I've, have everything written down. What's our next meeting after this? Is it scheduled or meeting? Did we have anything else?
We're not scheduled for a board meeting, as far as I know.
Now, it's kind of easy to, to do. Hey guys. Set that girl.
He's used to it.
I'm gonna call meeting in order.
Oh, wait, there's Wes.
Hello. G- Gina's locked out.
Yeah.
Alright, we'll get her out for Gina. You know what?
They're mine, you know, she didn't know.
No, not at all.
I showered for a minute. You're welcome, too. You'd be the one that would be watching, too.
How we doing out there?
We're red.
Good. Alright, uh, call meeting in order, special meeting, Board of Education, Tuesday, March nineteenth, twenty twenty-four, plead allegiance. Plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'll call Wes.
Here.
Gina.
Here.
Everything.
Here.
April.
Here.
Lisa.
Here.
Jim.
Here.
And I. Anything for a quick comment, huh? Alright. Number five, A S D, presentation of superintendent search survey results and review discussion of the announcement of vacancy.
I think I'll do what I did last time, if that's okay, if that's okay for you, it's kind of stood up here in the corner.
Yep.
Sorry, I apologize.
Did you bring your shirt?
Thank you for saying that. Oh, yes.
You bring your head glasses with you?
Sorry, I'm different, um, so, two purposes for tonight, to share the survey results, um, I have the quantitative data ready, and I'll say something about the qualitative data, which I need just a couple more days on, because I didn't get it until yesterday, and had a full day, and had another board meeting last night. But the important things we needed, uh, we have, and then chair draft of the announcement of vacancy. So what, one thing I want to say is, your community was really responsive to the survey, which is impressive, they had a tight window, and, um, it's a smaller district, and I wish we could get this type of response everywhere, we'll give them more time. So, two hundred and three individuals total, um, completed, uh, most of the survey, there were a number in each one that, um, didn't make it all the way to the end, people would get sidetracked, or maybe not just do, um, the last part. So, two hundred and three people completed most parts, a hundred and seventy-nine completed all parts, and that's really good. Um, one thing, in case I forget to say it later, one administrator, um, uh, responded, and that's not very, um, confidential, when there's only one. So, I did count the responses in, towards the total, when I'm looking for themes, but just erase them from there, so that, you know, the person without, it's not fair. Like, even with state testing, it's not for intensive show results.
Sure.
So, um, uh, and you don't need to worry about reading the, um, the tiny print for the characteristics, because, uh, I, um, like, the green were the top choices in each, with each stakeholder group, the yellow was also high, just not as high as the green. But what I looked for were choices across all of the stakeholder groups, and that's what you will see when I hand out, um, the announcement of vacancy. So, don't strain your eyes trying to read one of those things. Um, but later, with readers or magnifying glass, I'll, I'll be happy to put each of these on their own page and make it large, and send it to the board president, if you would like that. Um, but anyway, you can see what I did in, in doing the color coding system. At the bottom of each of the stakeholder groups, and I'll start with the board as an example, just because it's the first box, um, at the bottom, uh, besides picking the, uh, qualities and experiences, um, that you feel would be a good match for the district, were also asked, uh, what do you think about, should they have previous teaching experience, and it was five yeses, one no. Previous, um, essentially like, high-level administrative experience, like district level, uh, four yeses, two no's. Um, previous superintendent experience, five yeses, one no. And, uh, important that the superintendent reside in the district, two yeses, four no's. Um, if there was a kind of a pretty strong consensus, I put it in bold. If it was almost fifty-fifty, or was fifty-fifty, I think I italicized it, or just did not bold it, yeah, did it, did bold it. So, um, looking at the teacher group, thirty-four teachers started it, thirty-one completed all parts. They said yes on teaching experience, they also said yes on district level, or central office admin experience. Uh, they were kind of, they were fifty-fifty on previous soup experience, and they said no on, um, that was important, um, regarding residency. Uh, the administration one was just one, so I already mentioned that. Going to other staff, seventeen, um, started it, fourteen completed it. And again, I looked at the top selections, at the color-coded part, and then, yes on teaching experience, yes on district or central office experience, uh, kind of fifty-fifty on previous soup experience, and again, eighty-six, almost fifty-fifty on, uh, residency. Going down to parent guardian, eighty-two folks started it, seventy-two completed all parts. Again, that was actually a really strong number for, uh, students. And, uh, yes on teaching experience, by quite a margin, yes on central office experience, by quite a margin. Again, kind of a fifty-fifty on previous, uh, superintendent experience, and same thing on residency. And you'll see where that kind of enters into what we're asking for here, it's up to you, I sort of did what I thought it could or should be. Um, and then, community, sixty-three individuals started it, fifty-five completed all parts. Yes on teach, that they want teaching experience, yes on, uh, district or central office experience, no on previous soup experience, yes on resid, residency experience. Um, and then, what I will say, the other thing I'll say about the, um, the comments, so there were four, as you'll recall, for those of you who took it, there were four questions. What you need about the district, was the district really doing well? Uh, what might be some challenges in the next few years, if the next superintendent needs to be prepared, have skillset to face? And if you were in charge of hiring a superintendent, what, what would you be looking for, kind of question? And that's what I'm still coding and theming, because there were twenty-four pages, uh, typed, of comments. So, a lot of people responded, that's wonderful, that will give us a lot of rich data. And that will help inform some of your, um, uh, interview questions, probably. I can tell you from the first question, what you need about this school district, uh, there was just this, a theme, theme, theme across the board. Uh, people talked about the size, that it's small, yet for being small, has so much to offer students. There's, it was, which you know, I'm not even telling you, but just, the underscore, what I picked up on is a lot of pride in the district. And, um, about the number of opportunities for students, even though it's a small district. And because it's a small district, um, uh, it's like, the, the benefits of being a small district, where people know and care about each other, adult to adult, and adult to child, and teacher to parent, um, but yet, uh, sometimes in small districts, there are just not a lot of, of opportunities for students. Um, uh, taking, um, coming out of high school with an associate's degree, for example, a lot of people mentioned, so, a lot of really complimentary things. I will do that for all of the sections, where I will code them, tally what were the comments, and, um, and will send those, will provide those to you. I could either, um, bring them, you know, to a board meeting, depending if that would work out, uh, to me, or just send them to you.
Okay.
Yeah. So, any questions about these results? I showed you when I came last week, what one of these looks like, when it's done, and it's nicely done, and it's a little more polished, and the paper is nicer, and it's folded. So, please just know that this is a draft, and it has not gone to the, um, pub, our publication department yet. Uh, and also, a reminder that most of this gets sent out electronically, but we do do some paper copies, that we give to candidates, and will provide you with some paper copies. Okay, so, if you don't mind, let's start on the side, if you look up here, it does not have your logo. I'm sorry, it's upside down, you can tell I credit it, not my industry of the system, but, um, yeah, we start on this side. Uh, so there's like an introduction to the announcement of vacancy. The one thing I want to just point out in the second paragraph, that starts out, is anticipated, the total compensation package. Um, most districts, at the very beginning of their search, when this needs to go out, they aren't ready to, um, publish, like, a maximum, or a, uh, like, a range, or, or not less than, and so, right now, ninety-nine percent of districts are posting, say this, it's anticipated, the total compensation package will be based on successful experience and education. Now, going to, this won't affect you, but I do just want to mention that there's, um, a state law has passed, that goes into effect next January first, that, uh, organizations with so many members of employees, if they post a job, it has to include salary information. Um, but that starts next January first, so it, it doesn't, so that'll just mean the boards will have to have that compensation soon. But what I wanted to say about that is, I will provide to you, through the board president, um, some salaries, some compensation information, I'll do a little digging to give you some context, uh, that hopefully can help inform your conversation.
Okay, great.
Then, the general information on the district and the area, there's one, two, three columns, thanks to, uh, Tim and his, uh, team, or just Tim, I don't know who all worked on that. Uh, turn that around to us in a really timely manner, and I, I really appreciate that. Uh, if anyone sees a typo, and again, it will be more polished, the, the margins will be, um, um, what's the word, um, right?
Justified.
Thank you, I didn't think the word justified. The margins will be both right-hand, left-justified, and, um, it'll, it'll be a little sharper and clearer, and the columns will line up well. But if you see anything that's an error or something, um, or unclear, just please let me know. What's the last column on this side, is the projected timeline, we've talked about the April twenty-third application deadline, and then, um, some of those other things, when I'll bring candidates to the board, they'll have, I don't think we said that board meeting yet, um, board interviews, I did kind of approximate there. Um, and re- reminding all of us, including myself, that our goal was to act on this, give it enough time, to have a good application window, but giving you and us time, that if you wanted or needed to pivot to an interim, that you have time to do that, and that it's not June, it's earlier than that. Then, under the projected timeline, just so you know, because this appears on the announcement of vacancy, there are some questions, I'm going to call them in essence, short essay questions, that a candidate needs to respond to, and that's what they are. We evaluate those for both content, what did they say, and then writing ability, pre- uh, grammar and accuracy. If you'll flip to the other side, please, and then picture this, like, folded up nicely, on nice paper, as a, um, as a, as a folded document. Um, that continues on the far left column, that continues district information, financial data, tax rate, board member names, number of years of service. And again, if you see any errors or catch something, uh, once in a while, when it gets transposed from what's sent to us to the template, something can get, uh, a little wonky or off, and we can, um, certainly fix that, if you let us know right away. Um, say by tomorrow noon, because again, remember, our goal is to get this out right away. I'm gonna skip the ideal candidate for a moment, because that's the one we'll need to discuss, um, briefly. Application instructions, um, is for the applicants, for potential candidates. It gives them, um, information about how they're going to apply, where they're going to go. Um, in addition to doing the online application, they need to give us a formal letter of application, they need to give us a formal resume, they need to give us at least three letters of reference dated within the last three years. We need copies of transcripts, we need proof of their licensure, and, um, that information is all provided. And then, the far right column, which will be the front of the, uh, of the brochure, is, uh, the, the sort of title page, if you will. Name of your district, um, um, mission, vision, uh, the, uh, commitments in the community, and the date. So, if you'll please go back to column two, the ideal candidate, what I put in there came from this, what we just talked about, from the survey results. So, I looked at what the top things were across multiple, uh, groups. And so, we generally take the top eight, and those were the top eight. Um, couple of things to say about that, one is, um, if you, uh, some, uh, occasionally, a board will want to add something. They'll say, we've got a big construction project coming up, or, um, again, I gave some examples last week. Um, contract negotiation, we'd really like someone with experience in negotiating contracts, uh, contract negotiations. So, if there's something else, uh, we can include that. And if, for some reason, you think, well, we kind of wish something was bumped up, because we try to do it in kind of priority order, I did it in kind of priority order as to how people indicated it. Um, so, one thing I'll ask you to do is, you know, take a moment to consider that, so it's finance and budget expertise, it's working with the board, it's fostering a professional culture for educators, focused on engagement, accountability, and empowerment. Um, talks about systems of curriculum instruction and assessment, excellent written and verbal communication, and is genuinely, genuinely collaborative, ensuring an inclusive, safe school environment, uh, developing and enacting a shared mission, vision, and core values to advance high-quality education, and facilitating continuous improvement through data, um, program analysis, and innovation. Um, so, in just a moment, I'm gonna quit, quit talking, and let you folks kind of ponder and talk amongst yourselves, if you want to, if you add anything, or bump something up that you think is more important. Then, based on the last four items, do you think they should have previous teaching experience, previous principal, you know, that kind of experience? Um, I took the total results and came up with this as a draft. Um, previous teaching and administrative experience required, superintendent or other central office experience preferred. That was my takeaway, um, and that, uh, I think will allow us to cast the widest net, that if there's a really strong principal out there, they're not going to suit yet, uh, but they have the licensure, and they've done an internship, and they're, um, you know, ready to go, that, that it doesn't exclude them. And you'll notice I also did not include anything about residency, because the majority of the people did not see that as a deal breaker. And I didn't include it, but this is your, um, search, and if you want that in there, we can add it. And I, I think I mentioned last week, there is a, there's a, um, kind of a, I'm gonna call it downside, I guess it's a downside, but it's, it's a reality. If you put, um, residency is required, even if you put residency is required at a timeline, for relocating can be negotiated, and that reality is, um, there will be far fewer applicants. So, um, I say that, just so you know that, but the decision is yours to, to put that in or not. So, that is the survey results, that is the announcement of vacancy. My goal would be, um, and my hope would be, that you could have some discussion, and, um, kind of come to consensus, that looks good, that looks good, hey, maybe we should add such-and-such, what have you, and, um, that I would like to send this to our publication department, if possible, by tomorrow, so I can get this sent out, um, I've already, uh, had a couple of people contact me saying, when's the deadline for this search? And I wrote, emailed them back, and told them I was coming here tonight, told them that this would be coming out soon, um, but went ahead and told them that the deadline was April, um, twenty-third. So, people who are interested and want to see this as soon as possible. Questions or comments?
I did see one typo.
Oh, thank you.
The year under board interviews candidates, I think they just, fingers flipped.
Mm-hmm. Under which, which column, which page?
The board interviews candidates, on the backside, the year is fourteen, definitely.
Oh, thank you, mhm. Got it, got it, got it, thank you. Very good, yeah, got it, fingers. Sometimes, um, a, a typo or something is, uh, noticed later, so, um, you can kind of decide how, uh, instead of, you know, to decide that, um, you get an error, uh, if you notice an error or correction, again, if I can have it by noon tomorrow, maybe, maybe say the board president or superintendent, it needs to go to one person, and then, that one person sends them to me. Um, but, uh, beyond that, really, the, the, um, the column for the ideal candidate profile, anything you like or don't like, or want to see added, or changed about that, is probably one of the most crucial pieces.
One more question, do we have a Catholic church?
Mm-mm, it will be closing, well.
Is there, I'm gonna say again.
It's this year.
Within the next three years, but I'm guessing.
Okay, so we do have a Catholic church.
It's a one, by.
It was closing?
Thank you.
I like that.
One by the last.
I thought it was closing too, I don't know what happened.
I didn't, I heard it close, it's gonna close.
It's going to, and they're gonna reroute us to, um, Brentfield.
So maybe we don't, it's a, it's a, twenty-two years, or one to three years, it might.
Up to you, I think if it's not closing, then it'll be, it's okay, we'll include it.
Yeah, they moved it.
Yeah.
It was up here, right?
We moved it, I think.
Move what?
The church.
Oh, they moved the church, the church was just a couple blocks away.
It's amazing, we'll take the move. Talks about the ideal candidate, the eight bullets, and then the required, and the preferred.
I think it looks good. I guess I like that the eight bullets come off of the.
Yeah, that's kind of wrong, I would.
Yeah.
Is there anything that you see, in your experience of the bottom-line candidates?
No, uh, that's a really good question, I would say, no, nothing that to me would, um, either, uh, scare someone off, you know, so to speak. Or, uh, I mean, for example, if somebody said, you know, referendum experience needed, or, uh, major construction, something like, I like Quincy, and they were getting ready to build five new huge elementary schools, I mean, they need, needed someone, they weren't gonna be overseeing the day-to-day, they needed someone who understood those conversations, and, and, um, the ins and outs of new construction, so, um, again, that's all I need by scared someone off is, sometimes there's a very particular skillset, um, that is needed. And I think this is, um, you know, good, I think it's well-rounded, I think it's accurate, for, um, you know, when you need to wear sometimes a number of hats in a smaller district, I, uh, I think it's a good list, and I, it represents what you, what you and your stakeholders, um, feel are the priorities in terms of, of a skillset. And, um, same with, uh, teaching and administrative experience, I like having that, that, that's required. Um, but beyond that, if they have central office, if they have superintendent experience, great. Um, and, and if they don't, that you're willing to consider a strong candidate who doesn't yet have that experience, but brings a number of other experiences and skills, uh, to the table.
Yeah, they're going to, yeah. I don't have anything that I don't.
I've heard from maybe two of them, they're giving it a thumbs up.
I'm good with it, I'm good with it.
Thank you. So, really, thank you so much, your, your, um, community's been very, very responsive, that makes it easy for me, your central office, and you have been very responsive, thank you very much. Because the sooner we can get this out, the sooner, uh, potential candidates really know what you're looking for, and start to get a sense that they're already hopefully doing research about you on I R C, and on your website, but this is a pivotal piece. So, I'll get this to our production department tomorrow, and, um, uh, when it comes back from production, before we send it out, I will send it to the board president, um, for a, a quick looksee, and, uh, that, oh, and then I will finish the.
The other parts of the data.
Yep, the, the written parts, that was the twenty-four pages type, I will, um, finish coding and theming those, and also send those to you. Though, that won't be by tomorrow, but it'll be by the end of the week.
Okay, great.
Very good.
And you said those would be used to kind of form some of the questions?
Those, those will be used to, um, yeah, that's two, so two things, for saying that, typically, a couple of things. One, uh, typically that's used to hold, keep that document and share. One, uh, typically that's used to hold, keep that document and share it with the incoming superintendent, because it's a good, uh, document that shows a snapshot in time of what your stakeholders had to say right now at this point. So, number one, it's kind of a, it's one piece of like an on-board even for the, the person. And number two, a lot of times boards will say, um, oh, wow, you know, there were a lot of comments about this, a lot of comments about that, let's find a way to incorporate a question about that. And I will even, um, do that on the document I provide, I'll say, here, you know, here were the, here were the key takeaways for each of the four questions, and if you were going to turn it into a question, here's some possible, there's a possible working with that. And then again, the compensation information I will provide to you. And your, um, website is on, or excuse me, your email address is on the district website.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Um, in my, uh, when I email you, it has my cell phone at the bottom of my email, so you can e- always email and call me anytime.
Yeah, we do.
So, along.
It should be in an email string from.
Oh, do I have, okay. And then, um, probably about weekly, I'll keep you apprised of, uh, how many have started applications and how many have completed them, and kind of how that's.
Fantastic, I get that information, I can get it disseminated everywhere.
That is all that I have, this is special portion, and I won't take any more of your time than I need to, but I am, since I'm here, if there's anything else you're wondering about or that I can answer, I'd be happy to.
So far, I'm pretty impressed with the, with the, uh, just the program that you guys have put together to do this.
Great.
Uh, I thought the survey was excellent, a lot of good stuff in it.
Good, thank you.
A lot of good options to be able to choose from, and, uh, the additional answering, the, the actual answering of the questions. I'm glad we had such, so many people within our community.
I'm glad you did too. I, frankly, I was, um, nervous, just because I always am, whether we give them ten days, we usually don't ever give two or three weeks. The longer it is, the more people think, I'll do it later, I'll do it later. So, seven to ten days is fairly common, and we gave them less than that. So, I thought, and I know someone had asked, like, what's you, or someone had asked last week, what's usually the response rate? And it varies from, mm, not too great to really great. And, uh, so the day after we had sent, um, after the links went out, I asked our administrative assist- assistant to go in to survey monkey and check it, and she wrote back and said, there's a lot already. So, I, I knew that it was gonna be, you know, good feedback, I was really happy about that. So, yeah, okay, I'll stay in touch.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Have a safe trip.
Actually, there's a, what ball game going on out there?
Baseball.
Baseball.
Baseball. My grandson is a freshman at University of Wisconsin of Pross playing baseball. And it's gonna be really hard for us to get up there and play in St. Louis this weekend, Austin, they just started their season, I think it's self-competitive, St. Louis.
Well, it's probably a good thing, because they're about to get about six, seven inches of snow up that way, so.
Yeah, which is why they started their season in Florida. Which is why they started their season in Florida, so, yeah. Yeah, I, I did make it before, and I was on the St. Louis. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks a lot.
Okay, number six, air executive session, discuss performance and personnel for survey.
Thank you so much.
Five, I L C S, one twenty, slash two, C one. We'll call Wes.
I'll make a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion, but I need executive session, I'll second.
We'll call Wes.
Yes.
Gina.
Yes.
Brittany.
Yes.
April.
Yes.
Lisa.
Yes.
Jenny.
Yes.
Like, everybody out.
Everybody.
I moved to leave executive session, I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
I second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Give those.
Chad?
Yes, ma'am.
I work with your niece.
Which one?
Emma.
Oh, really?